I can hear everybody now.
Okay.
So Sarah, Sarah Mudge emailed an agenda item this morning that her and Colleen would like to, to speak through. So if you kind of want to walk us through the request for the agenda items today.
So it was an update on testing from Dr. Lisa and further information and protocol on the new public health orders coming out in the similar vein of many conversations that have been going on yesterday and today. But I will, I'm not sure if Dr. Lisa wants to jump in or Colleen wants to do any kind of overview, but I will give it to either one of you. Thank you.
Awesome. If you're okay, Lisa, I'll just start and then I can pull up the numbers that you had shared, both you and the hospital. But so basically, there's been, you know, a lot of conversation in the last couple of weeks about testing and where we're at and how many numbers we have. Who is it? Who is the one who's positive, right? There's been a lot of information that's been asked that obviously we're not able to share out. We do have numbers of where we're at at this point in time, and I will show that. I'll put up that Excel spreadsheet here in just a minute. But I think the reality is that we're in a good spot as far as testing goes. We now have the ability to test anyone who is symptomatic. Now let Lisa speak to the other testing that's available. But that has just happened as of last week. And so there's a lot of questions. Oh, we're seeing more positives because of our abilities to test everyone who's currently sick. And so that has been very promising. And so with that, I will turn it over to Lisa. And Lisa, if you're comfortable, I can bring up the spreadsheet that I quickly made. It's not as pretty as some of the other graphics that we've been able to push out, but it gets the job done in the sense of seeing where at as far as positivity rate. Does that's appropriate, Lisa?
Yeah, please. I wanted to just talk just a little bit about the specifics of the testing. So we now have two tests that are available. The first test that we have is a test that we've had for, you know, a long time. And that is the RNA PCR nasal swab test, and that looks for the presence of the virus itself. So that test is helpful three days before you get sick, the duration of your illness, and probably for a day or two afterwards. So about 10 days or so during the time that you're exposed and infected. But the exciting part is we have a new test, which is the antibody test, which is a blood test that looks for evidence of a previous exposure to the virus. And so just a little biology review, when you are initially exposed to a virus, you have an asymptomatic period, which is usually two to three days before you start getting your symptoms. You get the symptoms, and we all know what those are.
Lisa?
Yeah.
I'm really sorry. It looks like Commissioner Marcela got kicked off of the call. Can you give us just 20 seconds maybe for her to get back on here?
I'm here. I'm here.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right.
Yeah.
Okay. And so then about 15 days from the time that you initially began to be infected, your body starts making antibodies, something we call IgG, which is the memory antibodies to the infection. So we now have the ability in all of the medical facilities here in Lake County, both the hospital and here at Rocky Mountain Family Practice, to test for these two things. So just the specifics of the test, the RNA PCR test is very sensitive and specific, probably 98 to 99% accurate. So if you are positive on that test, you're positive, and you have evidence of the virus's genetic material. It is a very small window of opportunity, though, to get, you know, tested because you're only going to be positive for, you know, 10 days, you know, out of your lifetime. The IgG test is the blood test, and that's the antibody test. And what it shows is that you are either negative or positive. If you're negative, there's a 98% chance that you've never been exposed to a coronavirus that looks like the coronavirus that causes COVID-19. If you're positive, there's a 90% chance that you have been exposed to COVID-19 and that you have the IgG antibodies to that particular virus. However, there is a 10% chance that it's a false positive test and that you've been exposed to a coronavirus which is similar to COVID-19, but not COVID-19 itself. So you have to examine that data with a little bit of scrutiny because it's not nearly as accurate as the nasal swab, you know, RNA test. So what we've done is we've looked at about 200 plus, 218, I think, people with the IgGs and the RNA test. And what we've seen is a little bit of discrepancy where we have St. Vincent's reported 4.2% positive rate for the IgG test. Rocky Mountain Family Practice, about 2% positivity rate. And if you look at places that have not yet had their surge, that's pretty consistent where people are, where there's a little trickling of people who have been exposed. If you look at the DNA or the genetic testing, the RNA PCRs were a little higher, about 20% for St. Vincent's and 17.4% for Rocky Mountain Family Practice. The sample size is much smaller. If you look at both of those together, it's about 38 people. But you have to remember that we're only able to test, you know, during that 10-day window, and we're really only testing people who are sick. So those numbers are going to be much higher than the antibody test. But the bottom line behind all of this is that not many of us have been exposed, not many of us have developed antibodies to the test. And I do not believe that the virus has been here in full force yet. So for whatever that means, we are still, the worst is still yet to come. And we don't know what that will look like. And so my purpose of being here during this meeting is to support the Safer at Home initiative. I think that is the right place for us to go. But I do believe that we need to be very, very cautious as we move forward and that the absolute worst thing that we could do right now is to not put those things in place, not to take them seriously, and then we get a surge, and we get a surge in a big way.
Dr. Lisa, can I ask you a question? The, as far as I know, there really isn't a very definitive research yet on, even if you have been exposed, that that is an indicator that you will not contract the virus again. I mean, can you speak to some of that science and?
Yes, ma'am. So
Thank you.
Yeah, there are. It's a great question. And so we know that, and I use, you know, the measles as an example. So we know that when you're exposed to the measles and you have not yet had the vaccine, you get an aggressive immune response. You get the disease, or you get, you know, the symptoms of the disease most of the time, 80% of the time. And then your body develops immunity, develops these IgG antibodies to the measles, and then you're very unlikely to get the measles again. That is probably what happens to every viral infection out there, with the exception of some famous ones. HIV, for example, is what we call a hyper mutable virus. And so HIV changes the way that it looks to your immune system daily, probably multiple times per day, which is why it's very difficult to get a vaccine to HIV. COVID is probably somewhere in between the measles and HIV. And probably similar to influenza in the fact that it will change frequently. And we don't really know exactly how frequently that is quite yet. But if it behaves like influenza, it will, it will change every season. And so although you may develop antibodies to COVID-19, you don't have antibodies to COVID-20, you don't have antibodies to COVID-21. And we'll have to assume that this virus will continue to circulate the planet similarly to the way that influenza does. And until we have effective treatments or a vaccine, which will help some of us, you know, be protected, then, you know, we're going to be pretty open to infection for this virus. And so although it is thought that antibody development to this particular virus that happens to be in your neighborhood right now is probably okay. The virus that may be in your neighborhood next week, you may not be immune to.
Dr. Lisa, do you have any information on the status of research on treatments and vaccines?
So we will get a treatment before we get a vaccine. There are some interesting drug trials out there for some antiretroviral medications, for instance, enough, so HIV medications. But those are at least six months off for, you know, any real definitive proven treatment. A vaccine is at least a year off, if not, you know, potentially more. What is showing the most promise is something called convalescent serum. So those of us who are, who have been infected have these IgG antibodies, and when you donate blood, those antibodies are removed from your serum and then given to people who have active COVID infections, and they tend to recover much more quickly. So that treatment appears to be pretty effective.
Dr. Lisa, do you have any kind of data showing the severity of the positive cases that we've experienced in Lake County?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we do. And it runs the gamut, from people who are completely asymptomatic, who never had any evidence of illness, to those who were intubated and in the intensive care unit for several weeks, who still may or may not survive. We have had no deaths yet, but the virus does run the gamut, as we have seen throughout the rest of the world.
Colleen, do you want to give us any additional information or walk us through anything, anything else that we might need to know with, with this information, Dr. Lisa? What's, what's our forecast or our outlook looking like with the trending in this data? And now that we have more testing?
So like I said, the outlook is still pretty grim, that it's not yet been widely circulated, that it hasn't infected our community as it will, and that we still need to be very cautious. So that's my projection. You know, if you're asking about when, you know, we will see the most number of cases, it depends on how well we are, how well we do with social distancing. So if we continue to, you know, social distance as we have been, it will likely continue to trickle. We will not have a major surge that will overwhelm our medical capabilities. And we will just continue to see a fair number of cases, you know, as the weeks march on, pretty similar to the previous week. If we are not careful and we just have a free-for-all and nobody socially isolates, then we will have an enormous spike in cases that will overwhelm our medical system and will be in trouble. So your job as county commissioners is to figure out, you know, what that looks like. And, you know, I, my recommendations are to proceed with caution. And I certainly understand that, you know, economically, if we continue to do, do what we're doing right now, the stay-at-home, actually not the safer-at-home, but the stay-at-home, then, you know, our community sunk. And then, you know, none of us are going to be able to survive economically here. However, if we, you know, throw caution to the wind and, you know, open everything up right now with zero social distancing, then, you know, there, there may be some of us that don't survive that. So I think my recommendation for you is to proceed as you are with your safer-at-home. I think that, you know, the governor's data is very similar to what we have here, that we need to just proceed with caution and make sure that we're limiting our exposures, although, you know, exposure as they are, but not to overwhelm our healthcare system and our ability to treat people when they get sick, because they certainly will.
I see Corbin and Karen are also on here, and I, I'm not sure which, the hospital, Lisa or Colleen? Two questions that I have. One, if you can explain the process of getting tested and then that quarantine and isolation, well, I guess the quarantine and, and if you have severe enough symptoms that you need to be admitted to the hospital, how quickly and what does that process look like transporting you? And is it automatically Denver? Do we know, you know, would it be Summit or Eagle County at all, hospitals or healthcare facilities? I'll let you answer. Somebody answer that one.
So I can talk about the patients. So we've kept several COVID patients here in Ludville. So it just depends on how sick you are with, you know, anything else. We, you know, Ludville Hospital is very capable of treating patients, and there are patients who meet criteria to stay here. And we've done that, and that's gone very well. And actually, the majority of the patients that needed to be hospitalized in Lake County who had COVID, we kept here and we took care of, and they're fine. There are a few people who did not meet criteria to stay here, and they needed a big city intensive care unit, and so they were transferred down to Denver. And they, you know, are in a big city hospital. We certainly use our regional partners. Salida, Harvard Rockies, being the one that we mostly go to with their, you know, expansive services. But we can use Vail Hospital, we can use St. Anthony Summit if we need to. But mostly, patients have been staying here. When they call and they are sick, you know, we treat everybody as though they're a potential positive, just like we do with HIV or really any other infectious organism. And so we all are wearing our personal protective equipment and protecting the healthcare worker. I think I'll let Colleen speak to the quarantine recommendations.
Thank you, Lisa. And so we know from the beginning, by the time people decided to come in and get tested, if you will, part of that isolation phase, right? So isolation means that you're sick, and quarantine means that you are healthy but been exposed, but you need to now quarantine for a certain amount of time. The parameters have changed as this event has unfolded in the sense of recognizing when folks are more, and Lisa, you can step in here too, are, you know, more likely to spread, the exposure rate is much higher, symptoms are present, and that kind of thing. And so, you know, if somebody is isolating because they are sick, the recommendation at this point in this time is that they are, you know, isolating at home, following, following social distancing protocols, and that they have to be fever-free without any medication for three days and seven days post-onset of symptoms in order to kind of be back out in the world. And so when we talk about quarantine and we talk about some folks, it is dependent on when their exposure was. So what happens is, you know, if someone's waited a week to, you know, get tested, if you will, with symptoms, then we, you know, when we do our contact tracing, so basically what happens, right, we get a positive, and we reach out to those folks, we see, you know, what their close contacts were, were they following good social distancing protocols? Because I'll say that I am proud of so many of our community. When we have reached out, they've recognized that someone in their circle has been sick, and they've just been doing the right thing, social distancing appropriately, and all those other pieces. It's a limited amount of days for quarantine, right? So if they were exposed seven days prior and now I'm talking to them, it really only have seven more days in that quarantine piece, which makes a total of 14. So I think sometimes there's some confusion when they're like, wait, you were just told to quarantine, why aren't you quarantining for 14 days? Well, it's from the day of exposure. And so we do work that out with everyone that we outreach to the hospital as well as recommend the family practice. You know, do you provide information to people when they are tested? Do you isolate if they don't need to be hospitalized, isolate and to work in their circle to recommend, you know, quarantine? So they're actually ahead of it because I don't get that information until there's a positive. So obviously, there's a lag on our end. And I do feel very confident in the information that is shared, and I feel like people are taking those pieces seriously when they're tested. And that, so hopefully that answered your question.
And the only one other one that you asked was about testing. And essentially, you can get, anybody can walk in and get tested. And so at the hospital, you call, the front desk asks for an appointment with Dr. Petrie or Joe Edizer, and then they will do either the blood or the nasal swab, depending on, you know, what's clinically appropriate. Here at Rocky Mountain Family Practice, you just walk in and we'll test anybody at any time. Go ahead, Greg.
Oh, I just wanted to ask Dr. Zrodlicher. You know, I looked at, looking at your testing numbers, I only see an active, you know, the RNA test, which I guess is active COVID. I only see seven positive results, but, but those are different, those are different than the numbers that are being presented to the public. What is, what is the disconnect there?
So there are my numbers that come from Rocky Mountain Family Practice, there are the numbers from the hospital, St. Vincent's, and then there are people who live in Lake County but who have been tested elsewhere. But it's, but it's reported based upon where you live.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And then just to add to that, we are counting positives. They have changed the case definitions of what a positive looks like. We do have the ability to call someone a probable, which gets registered as a positive. So if someone just does the, the antibody test and they're positive, we do not count that as a positive. Once we do the contact tracing and we find out that they're actually linked to another person who had the RNA swab test, and so who has active disease, or they've been exposed to active disease, we then call them positive. So our numbers will actually reflect higher than the state's because it's up to us to make those decisions. And, you know, depending on the workload, right now, we're able to handle it. But the recommendation at the state level is, you know, because, you know, they're making that recommendation across the state. If you don't have the ability to call the folks from the antibody test, it's not required. At this point in time, we do have the ability, and we feel that is important to make sure that if there's someone within that circle who's just starting to show symptoms, that we make sure that, you know, they're tested and we kind of expand out from there. It's kind of like a spider web. You can envision one person being sick and reaching out to their contacts, and then that person gets sick, reaching out to their contacts, if you will. So that's why our numbers will continue to be a little bit off from what we see being reported at the state because of our abilities, all of our community members at the same time who have positives, regardless RNA and/or antibody.
I'd like to, oh, go ahead, Mayor.
No, I just said thank you.
Okay. I'd like to understand, I know we had talked about and hitting those four or five criteria of hospital capacity, being able to test, and those sound adequate, and, and everyone sounds pretty confident in moving forward. I'd like to hear maybe from the hospital where the county or we all might help support that. And at one point, I can't remember how many days or weeks ago, but contact tracing, you know, there was a possibility that we could maybe help improve personnel or staffing there. So, so is that still a need? How can city or county or, or partners better assist there if there is a need?
Trip piece upside, Corbin, did you want to start?
Yeah, I was just going to jump in about hospital capacity. So our traditional staffing method, model supports roughly five inpatient, you know, beds at one time. We can ramp that up. We're kind of built to do that. We also staff ER appropriately for five beds there. Just to give you something to gauge what our normal staffing models are. Now, our search plan accounts for far more staffing than that. So I'd say we're a little, we're a little more prepared than our normal staffing.
Corbin, can you speak to the fact that you have reached out to the community for folks, if we were to have to, if we were to have to, if we had to stand up the alternate care site, what that might look like staffing-wise?
Yeah, so it's, it's in phases based on census. So depending on how many patients show up to our facility, there's, there are several levels to that model. And the worst of which is, is moving to an alternative care site. That would only be utilized in the event that we could not transport patients to other facilities. And we do have partnerships, as Lisa said, with regional facilities, and then throughout the entire state, we have partnerships. So I can probably be better to send you the details of the search plan rather than try and go through them all here, it'd take a while. But just know it's, it's, the first wave is pretty standard, our standard operation, operating procedures as far as staffing goes, and then, you know, it scales up from there. Additional space for waiting and triage and rooming, and to the point where we would open the gymnasium and staff that and supply that with our search trailer. Our PPE situation is still normal, and we bolstered our stock on stuff related to surge for COVID. So I feel pretty good there unless, you know, we as a nation begin to see more calls for PPEs. So I don't know if that answers your question, Colleen?
Yeah, no, I think that you guys had put an ad in the paper for anyone, you know, who's not already affiliated with St. Vincent, if they had, you know, if they were interested, if we had to get to that point of an alternative care site, that it was better to identify who those people are now versus in the moment. That's kind of where I was going with that. But I think that was really great information.
Yeah, I see. And Karen's online. Maybe she could speak to it with more detail, but I know we did advertise for previous clinical professionals in the area, and we did have some response. I think it was small, but there was something. I think the last report I got was maybe three people had responded. So yeah, we were just trying to reach out to, you know, with clinical background to, that could be licensed and approved to work in our facility, of course, so that we were ahead of the game and trying to roll out more staffing, you know. And we do have a lot of staff here, and we have our processes for, for acquiring our own staff in the event that we needed more hands on deck. And so we utilize the Everbridge system along with you guys at the county. So we're prepared there as well.
Yes, thank you, Corbin. Like I said, it's, it's been a pleasure working with both St. Vincent Hospital and Recommend and Family Practice because as you can imagine, there's so many conversations that are happening behind the scenes about what this would look like and, and not just throwing our hands up in the air of like, well, whatever. And so I am thankful and to all our partners who've been putting in that time and energy with that. And as far as contact tracing goes, at this point in time, we feel confident in public health that we can handle it. There is some conversation that Recommend and Family Practice and in turn, St. Vincent, in the sense of how we, how do we share information sooner or what more information we can point to people as far as, you know, some of the information that they're receiving. I do have some nurses who have volunteered their time to help if they need that, and that's just more of working out, you know, what that agreement might, might look like between the county and these nurses. And so I do feel confident that we are at a good point at this point and ready to expand that as needed with volunteers.
Thank you. Colleen, is there?
Oh, go ahead, Sarah. Okay. Colleen, I just wanted to kind of circle back to that reporting of positive and probable and that kind of thing. Can you explain why, when we, when we're reporting the cases, why we don't report negative cases? And then have we, have we put information out through our public information officer to say, here's how, here's how positive cases are identified and reported?
Yes. So we have pushed out information around that. As you know, it has changed and evolved as far as even what cases were or what they look like. And we have pushed out that information in the sense of, you know, our numbers might be different as well as they may not reflect, you know, because we know people are getting tested in other counties, you know, as well. And so obviously, you know, there's a need to, you know, re-push that out, and that's, you know, that's an easy kind of piece. And, you know, as far as negatives, we can do that as well. I think, you know, in the sense of just to get a number, like I'm guessing you're kind of edging towards like, hey, we want to know, you know, total amount tested and, you know, where we're at. And I think, you know, we, you know, obviously, we're tracking, we have those numbers behind the scene. And, you know, at this point in time, because of the fact that anyone has the ability to get tested, you know, whether symptomatic or not, then, you know, that's kind of more of the information that I want to share, not necessarily, you know, all the negatives, but it is helpful as far as our numbers go. And, you know, when you're looking at the positivity rate is, you know, it is dependent on, you know, negatives versus positives, if you will. And so obviously, the more folks that we test, that we can understand what's going on in our community. And hopefully that, well, I don't know, did that actually answer your question, or do I need to give some more detail? Or is there any, you know, feedback in the sense of, hey, I think it'd be really helpful to do X because Y?
No, I just, I just think that there's some general confusion about, you know, like the, the testing in other communities and then people being reported where, like, as a positive case where they live. So I don't think that there's, I don't think that, like, the general population understands. So I don't think that there's, I don't think that like the general population understands that, like if I get tested in Eagle County, it's reported as a positive test in Lake County. And so, so I just think that there might be an opportunity for us to explain how that works and explain why, you know, if you're looking at state data, here's why it's different from Lake County data. So maybe kind of pushing that information out there so that, so we're answering those questions in real time and appropriately. Because I think, I think, you know, there's been some question around that about, well, how do you understand, you know, your data from the state data or whatever that might be? So I think that might be kind of important for us to get out there through our public information officer.
Yeah, noted, Kayla, and we can definitely work on, you know, more messaging around that. I actually find what people want around testing is who it is. So I am more than comfortable sharing out, you know, education around how we're getting our numbers and all those pieces as well and continue to share that out. So yes, thank you for that.
Awesome. Go ahead, Sarah, you're muted.
I think Lori has a question. I can, I'm going to unmute you. You unmuted, Lori? Okay, I don't hear anything. I think the question is, is quarantine or isolation notification different with antibody testing versus nasal testing? I'm sorry, I can't elaborate on that.
Yes, that's a great question. So somebody who has received an antibody test, we don't have, you know, we're not putting them in isolation. It just shows they were exposed at one point in time. And Lisa, you can, you can see that if you want to put a timeframe on it. So they're not necessarily getting isolation letter. They are getting a phone call to contact base and figure out, are they, you know, a case that we want to count as positive? Because they can be, you know, we call it, you know, it's epidemiology, that we can epilink them to a positive, you know, nasal PCR RNA test and, you know, and go from there. So those folks aren't considered positive in the sense of infectious, you know, at that time as far as that goes. Lisa, do you want to elaborate on that for me?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to bring up the, you know, really important point that just because you have IDGs, and I think, Sarah, you said this earlier, that doesn't mean you're immune and that you're still at risk. And so those, that notification, you know, part of that is to continue to be safe and to make sure that you follow the social distancing practices.
Another very minor thing that I just want to point out because I think there was a great deal of confusion and maybe social media chat about this at the very onset of the event and testing, saying that everybody can now get tested. There is still a cost associated with that and it needs to go through insurance and all. You know, there's nothing that has changed there. Is that correct?
Oh, pick me, pick me.
Lisa!
No, they're great news. And I'll let Karen speak to the program that's going to happen here at the hospital or that may already be happening. But there is a federal program now that, through the CARES grant, which is now going to offer free testing. So it's a billing process. And so I get a webinar training tomorrow, Wednesday, and I hopefully will be able to go live Thursday. But it does provide federal funding to both see the patient and make sure that they're okay. And then also bill, the federal government, and I get reimbursed at Medicare rates. So it's a great deal for, you know, certainly for private practice. And then there's a public option that Karen will talk about with the hospital here. So that's not true and it is getting better. So we should have much more information here in the next couple of days.
I think Karen's trying to connect audio. I don't really want to speak for her, but I know we have sliding scale that we've traditionally used for any, any patients that don't have commercial insurance or Medicare Medicaid. And then, as Lisa pointed out, there's this CARES grant that allows us to cover the additional costs to our inbound COVID-related patients. Hopefully Karen got her audio going here, she can expand on that.
Okay, I'm not sure what's going on with audio here. But I guess I don't have anything, any other specific questions for anyone. I do appreciate the update. I see some council people on, council members online here, which is awesome to see the sheriff. And I want to just reiterate on behalf of the board and I ask that Commissioner Glenn and Marcela chime into that I think we are right in line with how things are unfolding and the conversations that are going to be taking place over the next week or two or three, really when we kind of talk about creative solutions or alternatives. I personally don't want to cause any angst in that, you know, maybe we are being premature and pushing anything that we shouldn't be. So thank you all for taking the time to share the information. I think that we're planning, or public health is planning for their public meetings and informational calls. And I think that at least the calls that I've gotten in the last five or six days really have been related to, or I think the core of the frustration in those calls, whether they're from businesses or community members at large, is just keeping up with the pace of the information coming down to us. As we all know and are experiencing that that is, you know, that has been an imperfect system from the start and we all can share in that frustration of the flow of information. But I think that we are starting on a good track to opening those lines of communication. So Lisa, I see your hand is up. You want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just want to say, I was saying, you know, this is one data point, you know, in our map. And I just want to talk about the commitment between the hospital and certainly Rocky Mountain Family Practice of continued data gathering. And this will be an ongoing project until we decide that we don't need it anymore. But we will continue to gather this information for you, continue to present, you know, where we are sort of along the curve. And then, of course, you know, advice based upon what those, what that information is. And that information, I believe, Colleen, correct me if I'm wrong, will be pushed out through the Public Health Department so that, yeah, the commissioners will have and the city council members will have access to that information whenever they want it.
Thank you, Lisa. And Corbin also has Karen on her, on his cellphone for audio.
Okay. Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
That's great. So I want to go back to the, I lost everybody.
We can hear you.
You can hear me?
Very.
Okay, now can you hear me?
That's better.
Okay. All right, so the question about if, are the tests free? From what I understand, there's another webinar tomorrow or another, something else tomorrow that our billing office will be sitting in on. So the intent is that for people who are uninsured or underinsured, that some of the federal monies we've been getting and will help us pay for the tests and offer them to people who cannot afford them. So we'll send something out tomorrow as soon as we have all of that. And then I also heard a couple of things and I think, I think maybe everybody's clear, but it's not, the COVID testing, and Lisa, you can help with this, is not for anybody that's the COVID, that's, I'm not talking about the antibody testing. The COVID testing is for people with symptoms, right? Lisa and Colleen?
Yeah, so, you know, if we have to ration tests, then yes. The DNA test, or the, I'm sorry, the RNA test is for people who are sick. And that's what we've been doing thus far. You know, the test is only positive for 10 days, you know, in the cycle of this virus. And so we are doing more antibody tests. But honestly, once, you know, we need to know who is acutely infected, we can start doing the RNA test for people who are even asymptomatic, trying to identify the asymptomatic shedders. We haven't quite done that yet, but that's, you know, certainly will be the next phase of testing.
Right, right, okay. So as it is right now, anybody can request an antibody test and come into St. Vincent Hospital or Rocky Mountain Family Practice. It'll be billed to insurance at this point. And insurance is covering about 100, most insurances are covering 100% of that testing or any COVID testing. And then we'll also set up a program for folks that are underinsured or uninsured so that they don't get a bill for it. That's the goal. I would like to wait a day or so before we put that out because I'm still working with our billing office on that message. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Okay. All righty, well, thank you. Sorry, I had so much trouble getting in.
That's okay. So I actually would like to follow up with maybe a silly question and I think that you've hit on this. But what, what is the, the ability or the availability of the tests, both antibody and the COVID testing is abundant for everyone, it seems? What is the ideal? What kind of information do we want to see locally? And do we want to encourage folks to come in to get an antibody testing?
That's probably good for Lisa or Colleen.
Yeah, so, you know, if you, the Surgeon General is, Dr. Adams, he's put out some thought, said that if you can test 10% of your population in a time period, two to three weeks, that gives you a good idea of where, you know, where you are. And so, you know, I guess it depends on how many people you believe, you know, live in Lake County. But if it's about 8,000 people or so who live in our county, then they should have about, you know, 800 tests or so here within the next couple of weeks. And we are well on our way to get that done. So yes, we would love to have as many people as we can to come in so that we can understand where we are. You know, the bigger the sample size, the more accurate the data. You do have to remember though, that, you know, this is one point in time. And so as I just mentioned, it's really important to continue to follow this data longitudinally. And if our numbers, you know, begin to change, and that's important information for, you know, you to determine how, you know, are we moving at the right speed? Should we speed up? Should we slow down? We want people to come in and get tested. And if you look at our current capacity, right now, we can comfortably do about 100 tests a day.
I think that's really helpful for me here to encourage people to come in. Thank you.
One quick question, what is the turnaround on testing? So if you go in to get tested, then how quickly do you know your result?
Yeah, so, you know, obviously at all, we send, both St. Vincent and Rocky Mountain Family Practice are sending all of our test, testing tasks down to Denver. I mean, the Request Diagnostics or LabCorp, which is a high-complexity lab, which is necessary for this kind of testing. And so we are getting a turnaround of 48 hours, sometimes a little bit longer, sometimes a little bit shorter. But right now, that's what we're getting and it's phenomenally fast compared to where we've been. Certainly as more people test, the labs become busier, we might see a little slowdown. But today, it's about 48 hours.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump on there and just to clarify, you know, you see a lot of news about antibody testing being, you know, several companies making antibody tests that haven't all been FDA-approved. This is going to Quest Labs, as Lisa just said, and LabCorp, highly reputable labs doing this studies. And I don't, Lisa, if you can go as far as to say, these are, these are definitely FDA-approved? Yeah, I didn't think they were quite there.
So the PCR RNA tests are FDA-approved, but the antibody test, really no one has those FDA-approved yet. You know, and they're just done in a high-complexity lab to make sure that they're done as accurately as possible. But that's, you know, why the sensitivity of this thing is only 90% and not close to 98% like the RNA test.
Awesome. Does anybody else have any questions at this point for Dr. Zordlinger or Colleen or our hospital representatives? Okay, do we want to move on to our next topic?
Is that a general update on the public health order from Colleen?
Yeah.
Colleen, do you want to touch more on some of that? Sorry, outlining the public health order or have we touched on a lot of that?
Yeah, so there hasn't been, you know, we've kind of outlined the criteria where we're at as far as at, you know, the novice level, the green circle. We did have a meeting this morning with our business, excuse me, with our business community to ensure that they know what their next steps are. We have pushed out a timeline, you know, in conjunction to what is being recommended in the Safer at Home order. And we do have, you know, information continuing to go out. We feel confident of the businesses that need to open or would like to open as appropriate on May 1st. We are working through those applications and getting them all the information they need. And then we are working to get some community meetings in place midweek next week. We are going to push out questions to see where folks are at to make sure that we're prepared for those meetings appropriately and go from there. But like I had said before, you know, Safer at Home, everyone keeps reiterating, you know, it's not a free-for-all, it's just a matter of having the opportunity to, you know, shop locally, you know, do some personal businesses, services as far as, you know, haircut, nails, dog grooming, those kinds of things, dental. And so that is where we're at as of May 1st. May 4th, businesses, some offices might have the opportunity to go back. We still encourage, and that would be in going back at 50% and/or staggering shifts and encouraging folks that can telecommute to continue to telecommute. And so there's not much more other than, you know, working with the businesses and prioritizing that as, you know, the work that we're doing this week.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I, Colleen, I have Sheriff Fraz with us. She's had some significant increase in calls around violations around the public health order. Do you have any recommendations for us of how to assist her with answering those calls for the public health order?
Kayla, can I ask what specific, what kind of violations?
It might be better for Amy to speak to, to some of those specifics if we can unmute her.
I, she is, she appears unmuted. Although I don't hear anything. Sheriff, are you, can you hear us? I'm not hearing.
Okay. I'm totally available to the sheriff to talk to me directly offline, which is probably more helpful than, you know, kind of discussing and kind of actually doing a brainstorming, you know, in this meeting versus having that one-on-one conversation. So Amy does know how to reach me and I would appreciate that direct conversation. So that would be much easier for us to kind of work together on that one.
Okay. I think, oh, go ahead, Sarah.
Well, I just, I just want to, I think, I think the question that has come out in a couple of the conversations with the sheriff too is a request to maybe pass a resolution, the BLCC to pass a resolution to better enforce the fines that are outlined in the public health order. But again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what, what the violations cited are or what's trending and whether or not it's really helpful to pass the resolution or the public health order should be able to support any, any fees. order should be able to support any fees imposed. But I'm, I am sorry that we can't hear Sheriff Reyes. Mr. Marcela, is the sheriff communicating with you?
No, not on the call.
Okay. But yeah, let's have her reach out directly to Colleen to further that discussion.
I think that's a good idea, and I will just follow up with Sheriff Reyes as well right after we get done here to make sure that that happens. And then we can follow up if we need to, I think, as a board, support any kind of pathway that Colleen and Sheriff Reyes determine to be the best fit for us at this point. So yeah, that's fine. I think outside that update on that public health order, was there anything else on this work session that we wanted to discuss?
I don't have anything additional right now.
If anybody, since we're having some technical difficulties with the audio a little bit, if you guys can put into the chat or raise your hands of any additional information that you'd like to talk about at this point, I think it would be helpful. For those of you that are on the phone, Sarah, I think you're the host of this meeting, right?
Yep.
Can you, are those folks just unmuted?
I will unmute the phone numbers that I see. So it appears that everybody is unmuted at this time, who has, appears to have called in. So if anybody who has called in has a question or comment.
Okay. Oh, I see in the chat, there's a question in regard to the range. Jay, would that be in reference to the public gun range? Yes. Colleen, I'm not sure if you can see that in the chat. Is there any reason that the gun range cannot be open?
Yes, currently, as a county, we've made the decision to keep all our facilities closed until May 31st. If we want to have a discussion around a rephasing of what that looks like, then I would ask for that. But we are not prepared to open anything up at this point in time.
I also see that Sheriff Reyes has written in the chat that with a stage-two fire ban, shooting is restricted under that fire ban. And so that closes the range as well.
Great, thanks for sharing that, Sheriff Reyes.
Let's see, is there any other question? Amy, I see that you are typing into the chat. Were you okay with us connecting you with Colleen about enforcement of our public health order? Awesome, okay. So she's sending some emails now about that enforcement with that public health order. Does anybody else that is listening in on the phone, 970-406-1618, do you have any questions at this point? I don't think so. Okay. Does, let's see here, Commissioner Glenn, do you have any questions or comments or anything to discuss today? Okay. So with that, I think that we can adjourn until tomorrow. Tomorrow, we have another work session scheduled at 1:00 PM with the same information as today's call-in information. So we will see you all tomorrow at 1:00. If anybody has any questions that has not been able to speak on the phone here, please feel free to send us an email to commissioners@co.lake.co.us to connect with us, and we'll be able to answer your questions or get them to the appropriate party.
And the, yeah, the COVID dashboard is live as of Friday, so we should reiterate that. Right, thank you.
Thanks, have a good day.